Silence for our Mayor Ahmad who passed away two weeks ago.
Thank you. We will now start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you want to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number two, we have changes to the order of agenda. Mr. Rubens and Mr. Malpighi, we have a request from a member of the public to reverse items 7A and 7B. Do we see any need to do so?
I don't think there's a practical reason from the staff's point of view to do so, but if the council would like to, I don't think there's anything that would prevent you from doing that. So I mean, if I want to talk about that, I do have one other change to the agenda.
Okay, what is your change first?
Item 10B, which is consideration of awarding a consulting contract to calendar and associates in the amount of $569,419 for urban design and engineering services related to improvements on Old County Road. We'd like, the staff would like to pull that off the agenda this evening, and we'll bring it back to you on the 13th. It requires a little more legal review from the city attorney's point of view that he let us know today. So we want, we'd like to do that.
Okay, and the council with the request, item 7A, 7B, I feel that we should just go as it's agendized, but is there any comments on that?
Yes, I was going to make a similar kind of request, so.
Okay, Councilman Grokot would like to see a change. Councilman Griselli?
Whatever the council wants to do, I have no preference one way or the other.
Okay, well, we see a consensus from two of the council members and one who doesn't mind. So we will go with 7A and be as ordered. Next up, we have a report from closed session.
There's, Mr. Mayor, there's no closed session on this agenda, on the regular agenda, and, but there was a closed session on the special meeting that immediately preceded this, and there's no reportable action from the special meeting.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to item number four, council communications and announcements. We will start to my right, Mr. Griselli?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, nothing tonight.
Mr. Grokot?
Nothing.
Mr. Royce?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, well, that leaves me. Thanks for the buildup, guys.
As most of you know, this has been a very trying time for the City of San Carlos, and I would like to publicly apologize for the incident about a week ago that brought a lot of embarrassment and distraction to the city here. We have done some great work, and I apologize greatly for bringing any embarrassment to the City of San Carlos. And in doing so, in a later agenda item, we will be considering an appointment for mayor, and I will be taking my name out of the running in that, I believe. There are consequences for what we do, and I think my dreams need to take a hold for the best for the City of San Carlos. And I would hope we would come together as a council, and we would move forward, and we work together as a group. And I think any public distraction that I have caused, I'm greatly sorry for, and I refuse to be any more of a distraction. So I will be removing my name for mayor, and I hope we will have a unanimous decision on who will be mayor after this. So again, I apologize, and I hope we can move forward.
Going to public comment, item number five, we have two speakers who signed up for public comment. Andak Supero, I don't think I'm saying that correctly. Andre, sorry, Andre? Is there an Andre here?
Yes.
Thank you, Andre, you have two minutes. Thank you very much. My name is Andre Carpio. I'm the owner of the Solocar Carp. In the meantime, two of my car were stolen with the assistance of the police. And it was a very irregular thing. I called the police to get public, to get police service assistance, and instead, the police let the thief get away with it. And when I tried to stop it in the parking lot, the police say, it's a civil matter, you have to resolve that with the court. I suppose I could make a parallel image, people live with a partner, and that partner has the marriage certificate of someone else. That's about how the things came. But what disturbed me the most is that Mr. Grotto made an inquiry to the police, and the police sent him a two-page report, and it's full of error. And the main reason there is error is because I, as the plaintiff, the victim, was never investigated. It was strictly made by hearsay from other people, which I know, but which are adversely used by politics. And as a reason, my car hasn't been recovered. And the person who have stolen it is everywhere, in Peru right now, is in Germany, wherever. But it's impossible to serve the individual. So even if I want to try to sue, which I have been trying, I haven't been able, because the man cannot be served, and in the meantime, my solar car is stolen. And this is the responsibility of the police here. And further, you cannot, Mr. Grotto, you are, when you placate something on the internet, defaming my character, I know you are not responsible. You have this immunity as an elected official, but you should consult with the city attorney. And I have wrote letters to all these individuals there, and out of respect, they never answer me.
Mr. Andre, we're going to wrap up.
I know. So what I'm saying here, I want some redress here. And I have a letter in which I want you to answer, and I want to be sure that this is going to be followed through. I'm tired of it. This is seven more, my car has been stolen, and it's corrupt.
All right, thank you, sir. We will take your comments, and we will forward them on to our city attorney.
Thank you. It's corrupt, bunch of thieves.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up, we have Ms. Papel.
First, my condolences to those of you who were friends of Omar Ahmad's. Most of us in town didn't know Omar in that light. We only knew him as a public figure. But two other people have left the city this week who I really, really will miss. Robert Wild wasn't here very long, but he made a huge, huge difference in this town. He just, I mean, we were shocked on the east side to have somebody who would listen to us and who would get things done for us, and I'm going to miss him very, very much for a long, long time. The other is Doug Frye, who was our wonderful fire chief. He too didn't serve as fire chief for all that long, five, six years. But he did pull our fire department out of the ditch and get it back and running solidly with the help of Mr. Grokot and Mr. Griselli, and start to put the finances back together. And he got a lot of nasty personal attacks in return, which is really unfortunate and inappropriate. The people who were nasty to him should have looked at the history to see all the wonderful things he did for this town as well as Belmont. This town didn't even send out an e-notify saying he was retiring. Just went completely unnoticed officially by this town. Belmont had coffee and cake. It was a little, you know, very small deal, but they recognized him, and he appreciated it. We didn't do a damn thing.
Could you wrap up? Your two minutes is up. Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment? Mr. Randall?
Brian Randall, San Carlos, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. Regarding our wayward councilperson Klein, what a complex mess. I request the leave to the council entirely. I have something here on the fire department. I don't know if I can read it here. I have to wait till later on.
You can read it now if you would like.
Okay, thank you. Here you are, young old, through injury or just a cough gone wrong, suddenly unable to breathe, knowing you only have six minutes before the brain starts to die, hoping help is on the way, and wishing you had chosen the best fire department, not the cheapest. I ask that we pay to keep the best, which we have now. Do not cheapskate on wages. Pay the best and keep the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Okay, seeing no more public comment, we will move to item six, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action.
Item G.
Okay, Councilman Grokot requests removal of item G. Is there any other requests? Seeing none, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items 6A through F on the consent calendar.
Can I have a second? I'll second that. Okay, Ms. City Clerk.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, we will move to item 6G immediately then. Mr. Grokot?
Well, I pulled it because I'd like to see us vote separately on it. Myself, I cannot support this item of increasing parking rates from standard $35 right now to a, with an $8 increase to $43. I think, and given our economy and so forth, the fine where it stands is, is, is okay. And increasing it up to $43 is, I think, it's a, it's a big percentage, and it's too much.
Okay, is there any discussion from the council? We can have a report if we would like.
I have a question for Mr. Rubens. Mr. Rubens, can we adjust this? In other words, can we make it four, or two, or one, or, or 10, or 20, or can we do whatever we want?
You have discretion to set the fines.
So it's just a recommendation by staff, but we can adjust that? Okay, thank you. I would probably tend to agree with Mr. Grokot on the size of it, because it's over a 20% increase. And I don't know if Mr. Grokot would be interested in a compromise that I might provide of four, which would be half, half the, half the increase, which would give us, make it about $39.
Okay, before you go to any motions, are there any other?
I was going to make a motion, I just.
Are there any other questions? Because we're going to have public comment. No questions. Is there any public comment on this item? Ms. Bell? Oh, there are, 6G.
Pardon?
Right, you have two minutes.
It is possible to have some traffic infractions handled by administrative, I'm sure Greg Raffus can tell us the name of these things, but anyway, the city says, it's like if you let your weeds grow this high in your yard, the city says, you did it wrong, you got to pay us. And you don't have to split it with the state and the county and the dog catcher and everybody else. You just get the whole 35 or 40 bucks in the city's pocket. And one of our former commanders said, well, but you can't do that. People who run stop signs are dangerous and so forth. Well, people who park in the wrong place for too long probably are not doing physical harm to other human beings. I think this is the perfect place for the administrative citation, if that's what it's called, to be used and bring more money into the city without raising the rates ridiculously high. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Are there any other comments? All right, seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr.?
After the motion.
Want to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we increase the rates half of what was advised, which would mean, I guess, a $4 increase.
Okay, is there a second for it? Seeing no second, is there another motion? Or is there any discussion? Mr. Royce?
Yeah, I just want to share a couple thoughts here. In the City of San Carlos, when you think about parking and fines, you also have to think about the meters and the cost of parking, which we don't have. Most other cities, in fact, almost every city, you end up spending as much in Starbucks as you do on quarters in your ashtray, because you don't use your ashtray for anything else, but you do put quarters in there. And so the cost of ownership of a car and parking, and once in a while, you, you end up having a late lunch, and you get fined. So this fee, while it's a little of an increase, we've been on the, on the cheap side for actually just citations. I think we're on the really conservative side on the overall cost of parking and fees. We are really just passing on a cost where the county has a huge administrative cost to process these things. And we're keeping our fee pretty close to what we're keeping. So, so I would actually recommend, you know, going with the, which is the fee here. What's it, $44?
$8 increase.
Yeah, but the total amount's 44. Is that what that is?
43, I think. I think it's 43.
43, $43. I'd recommend moving to the $43 as staff has proposed here.
All right, is, is that a motion, Mr. Royce?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept our staff report and our, all of our fees. In fact, everything is the same. I like the consistency. No matter what the parking citation is, everything's $43, for $43 change for the City of San Carlos.
Is there a second? I will second that. Is there any other discussion?
Yes. So, Mr. Royce, I'm going to disagree with you strongly again. Get, when, if you walk to your vehicle and find a $35 ticket on it, that's, that's a lot of money. Now, myself, I happen to live in a part of town where if you park in front of your house for too long, you can get a ticket like that. And I've seen people in my neighborhood who don't, some of them don't even have jobs, but they're renters, and they come out, and there's a $35 ticket on their car, and that hurts. So, you know, it's one thing if you live in a neighborhood where you don't have that kind of condition, but if you live in a neighborhood, and some of our apartment housing is that kind of thing, and you've got people who don't make a lot of money, that's partly maybe why they are in a rental situation and don't own a home, you know, a parking ticket like that can be pretty strong. So I would suggest a compromise. Some of these things on here, you also said you'd like to see them all stay the same. Well, I, I don't quite see it that way. I, when I look through the list here, I see things that people should know better in some regards, just not parking correctly or, you know, prohibited zones and so forth. So I guess as a compromise, perhaps raising all the fees, except for the overtime fees, the one hour, the two hour, the three hour, and four hour, because those are the areas where, you know, someone was shopping or whatever their situation was, and they just, you know, it's, it's not something that's usually belligerent or anything like that. They just didn't think about it, and they left their car a little long. And I think $35 is a fine enough for a situation like that. Some of these other things, maybe, you know, parking where there's a sign that says there's street repair, and you're not supposed to park your car to begin with, fine, maybe we put that up to the full $43. But I think for overtime, 35 is, is a slap enough.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
So I would make a competing motion that we go ahead and raise the fines, except on the overtime for one hour, two hour, three hour, and four hours. We'll leave those at 35.
And I could second that, because I think that's a good compromise for overtime. I like what you said there.
Okay, City Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Griselli?
No.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. We will go to items 7A and new business, the selection of a mayor and vice mayor from, from May to December 2011. And we have some public speaker slips. Staff, do you have a presentation for this?
There's a memorandum that I've included in the council packet from, for items, it's listed under item 7B, but it does include some reference to this item. Right now, there's a vacancy in the office of mayor and vice mayor. We have an acting mayor, Councilmember Acting Mayor Klein. And tonight, we put on the agenda for you to, to reselect mayor and vice mayor. The mayor and vice mayor serve at the pleasure of the city council, are not entitled to any specific term. So you have the opportunity tonight to make the selection to select a mayor and then a new vice mayor tonight.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have a question, Sir.
Yes, Ms. Griselli.
If we don't do this, if, it needs three votes, right, every, so if we don't get three votes, then it'll, we'll have to wait, it stays in place, is my point.
That's right. The status quo with Councilmember Klein as acting mayor would remain in place if you weren't able to select.
And no vice mayor at this point, if it, the status quo.
They're, they're separate offices, so you could theoretically suppose pick a vice mayor.
In theory, okay. Hey, I just want to make sure everybody understood the, thank you.
And then I have a question.
Mr. Grokot?
For the city attorney.
Mr. Rubens?
If I can get his attention. That's all right. We would also, do we also have the option, if one wished to do so, to nominate someone who's not on the dais right now? That's why I was talking, I asked, I didn't explain it, but that's why I wanted to switch these items. I'd actually talked to the city manager about not giving us an agenda that locked us into first choosing the mayor and vice mayor before we get a fifth council member on, on board.
According to the council code of conduct, the only eligible persons for mayor and vice mayor are among the council, if I'm hearing you correctly. You don't have to select tonight, though, if you wanted to wait until you, the next agenda item and decide on who, future, to fill the vacancy, excuse me. So you could wait until that vacancy is filled, is what I'm trying to say.
So how do we go about doing that? Just?
Well, you would not, you would not.
Act on this item?
You would not act on this item.
And take up item 7B.
You would not act on this item, you could, and then you could set it for a future agenda meeting. You can reconsider your, your order of agenda. Those are pretty much your options.
Councilmember Grokot, my recommendation would be, if that was the council's pleasure, to pick a date specific, let us know, and we'll simply re-agendize the item for you to consider down the road. We have an obligation, I believe, under how the council code of ethics works now, to bring this item to you for action, but the council doesn't have an obligation to act on it right now.
Okay, so then my question is, two questions, date specific for making a selection? Or having this on the agenda, or what?
Yeah, I'd ask for a date that you'd like, or a date by which you'd like to have this on the agenda, and you could even tie it to the event of appointing the fifth council member.
Okay, and then how do I go about discussing what my idea is? You know, when I'm at the coffee shop, I can discuss freely with anybody and tell them what my idea is, and they can go, boy, that's a great idea. Don't seem to be able to do that right now. Help me out.
Well, I, I mean, do you see any issue in discussing this, or I think it's covered by the scope of this agenda item?
Yeah, I think this is a fairly broad agenda item. You can talk about timing, any ideas you have for selecting the mayor and vice mayor.
Okay, I would like to do that when you're ready.
Yes, we'll start with public comment then. We have three public comment slips. We have, first up, Gail Ghost. You can comment on, you can comment on 7A right now. We will be getting into 7B at a later time. And then Ron Collins, will be next? Okay, Gail, you have two minutes.
Okay, I won't need to. Since you've removed yourself from consideration for filling out the rest of Omar's term, basically, that's what I was going to ask you to do, so I'll come back and comment on B.
Okay, we will keep your slip for 7B. Okay, Ron Collins?
I don't have a lot to say, but I was reminded last week of our situation by a song I heard, and there's a line from the song called "Collide" called, "Even the best fall down sometimes." And we've had a tough month, as everyone knows. Some of what I've read, some of what I've heard, it's been very disappointing. We have a responsibility as the elders of this city to set an example, and I don't think we set it by tearing people down. I think Andy is a fine young man who is, has made a mistake. The legal process isn't even over with yet, and we may find out that there aren't any charges, and I hope that there aren't. But I also believe that if we're the city of good living, shouldn't we also be the city of good people? I think we need to stop tearing each other down and come together. We're like a family. This city raised me, and raised my wife, and raised my kids. When people get in trouble, I think you rally to their defense, and you don't tear them down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Laura Tuchel, and followed by Tom Nutson.
Hi, good evening. I'm Laura Tuchel. I've been a San Carlos resident since 1972, for the most part. And my comments really echo Ron's. I've been involved in the community for most of my adult life, as were my parents. I'm a member of the San Carlos Rotary Club, the Hometown Day Steering Committee. Hope you all had a good time this weekend. And I've worked on many of the local initiatives, including, most recently, Measure U in 2009. And since that revenue measures failure, which most of you supported, I've really been alarmed at the amount of vitriol and judgment and name-calling and side-taking that's taken place. I think city staff and the city council has been tasked with making some really difficult and painful decisions. And I'm really alarmed at, at the way we've all taken sides. I think we all need to step back. We need to remember that we all want his best, what's best for our community. Our styles and ideas, ideas may differ, but I think we want the same thing. So it's time to come together in the spirit of collaboration, everybody, and take a good, hard look at ourselves before we judge one another. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tuchel. We have Thomas, Tom Nutson, followed by Eduardo Sampedrio. Mr. Nutson, you have two minutes.
Good evening, members of council. Thomas Nutson, 803 East San Carlos. I've spent over an hour on this, so I'm at least going to get a chance to read you the final sentence. Thank you, Vice Mayor Klein, for helping us live within our means and for your continued selfless service to the citizens of San Carlos.
Thank you, Mr. Nutson. And last, we have Eduardo Sampedrio. Okay, we have Ms. Bell following Eduardo.
Hi. This is regarding the trash increase?
Oh, no, that will be coming up later in the agenda.
I put 9B on the.
Oh, read it wrong, okay. We must have read it wrong. We'll, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Bell?
The reason I asked for a change in the order of the agenda is pretty, I think the same reason Matt asked for it. I think that you need to fill that fifth position and then decide who's going to be mayor and vice mayor, rather than choosing from the four of you, get a five-member council, and then decide who's going to be mayor and who's going to be vice mayor. And I thank you, Andy, for taking your name out of the running for mayor. I think that does help to bring the city together and take some of the edge off.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Okay, so we will move on to discussion, and I will start this, since this is probably the last time. I'll be in this seat for a while. I've heard comments about postponing this, and I think we don't have the time to postpone what, what we need to talk about. The four of us were elected, and we shouldn't wait for an appointment to fill the seat of mayor. We need someone to run this council. We need someone to show leadership. And I've spent a long time, after I decided to take my name out of the hat, thinking about who that should be. We have some great council members up here, all who have done a phenomenal job as mayor, and all, I think, who can step into the reins as mayor and lead us. The decision I came to, and I will be making a nomination, is for Mr. Royce. Randy has been an integral part of this community. He has been volunteering and helping out in San Carlos for longer than I've been alive. You know, Ron Royce is synonymous with San Carlos, and I believe he is the right person to fill Mr. Ahmad's seat. Letting him out of the ring, I think Mr. Ahmad will prefer Mr. Royce at this point, and I'd like to stick with those wishes. So I will be nominating, if he agrees, Mr. Royce for the position of mayor.
Yeah, I would be honored. I know Omar, but I would be honored. Thank you.
Okay, we have, is there any other nominations or discussion? Mr. Grokot, I know you have some discussion.
Well, number one, I can tell from. Well, number one, I can tell from public comment and Sue Lempert's column that I've been misunderstood, because, you know, talking about, as though I don't want healing and I don't want what's best for the community and so forth. The idea that I had, I think, would be a good one, and it does help to, it would help to do a number of things. It would help to heal the community. It would help to bring stability to this council and some proven leadership to the council. And the idea that I had was to nominate Mr. Davids to fill the seat of Omar Ahmad, both as a fifth council member and as the mayor. Tom's been in the position before. Even Mr. Ahmad, his last words about Mr. Davids was when he was, Mr. Davids was sitting over here, and we were talking about trails, and he said, I'm surprised I haven't heard from Mr. Davids on this topic. And he said, Mr. Davids, to Mr. Davids, we'll let the mayor emeritus of San Carlos come and speak on trails. So he obviously had, Mr. Ahmad had a lot of respect for Tom, as I think does most of the community. I think Tom's a strong leader in this community, whether he's on this council, on this dais, or he isn't. He's very well-respected. And Ron, you mentioned about us being elders of the community. I don't think there's anybody in this community who is looked at as a greater elder of the community than Mr. Davids is. And so that's why I wanted to switch the agenda item around and discuss that first, because I could see bringing Tom on, not just as a fifth council member, but also as the mayor. And then, Mr. Klein, I respect you taking yourself out of the running, as it were, and I appreciate that. And my thoughts in regards to Mr. Davids and your position would be that if Tom came on, you could deal with the things that you need to deal with. My comments in the paper, by the way, and I'll say this to you now from the dais, I didn't make any judgment, and I wasn't saying anything disrespectful of Mr. Klein or judgmental. I was simply saying that, in fact, all I said that was quoted in the paper was that the circumstances of that week, including events that happened with you, I told the reporter, we wouldn't probably be discussing those in particular, but it would probably weigh on our decision and our thinking, and that's all I said. And I didn't say I was going to be voting one way or the other, or even taking you out of the running. I just said it would be, I imagine it would be part of the discussion. And part of my thinking on that, which I didn't state in the paper, and I'll state right now, is that when you're in a situation where you're, you know, having to deal with courtrooms and lawyers and so forth, it takes your time. And it's a distraction, it takes some of your time, it takes some of your energy, and my feeling on it was, you know, remain as vice mayor, but take your time in getting those things dealt with and taken care of. As Mr. Collins said, you know, you're innocent until proven guilty, and that's a fact, and I accept that. But you do have things that you need to do and take care of, and that would give you the time to do that. I've been the mayor before. I know that, you know, there's a lot of meetings with the city manager, dealing with agenda items. There's a lot of meetings that you're requested to go to. There's events and functions with the Chamber of Commerce that you're expected to go to. You know, I know when I was mayor, I saw my business go down, because I was spending so much time doing those kinds of things and not necessarily, you know, giving all my attention to my business or my family. So it's a big job that anyone who's in that position and in that role, it's a big commitment that you make to the community. And so those were my feelings about it, and that's why I would, if we could, I would like to be able to put Tom into the nomination, but the way this agenda is set up, despite my asking for it to be set up in such a way that we could have that as an option, it's not done in such a way to do it simply, there's a lot of hurls, what I'm hearing, to do it, and I'd have to get agreement from my council to at least postpone it. You know, it's something that we could do, have done in a week if we wanted to, because if we wanted to appoint Tom to the council, you know, we could just hold a special meeting within a week and get it all done.
Okay. Mr. Griselli, did you have anything to add?
Well, it's just, it's a difficult thing. I mean, as everyone's spoken about, Mr. Davids is an extremely well-respected member of our community, and he would certainly have no learning curve stepping up here. He follows everything that we do, and he has done the job before. The only situation that comes up is in the past, I know we've done this a couple of other times in my memory, for not replacing anyone who had passed, but someone who had to leave for business purposes or had to resign for personal reasons. And I think, at least in one of those cases, I don't know about the first case, I believe Mr. Judge came back, but I can't remember if that was an appointed or if that was a, but in the second one, when we had Lee Thompson come back, that was an application process, as I remember, and that was more transparent. And that's, that's the thing that's holding me up a little bit more, just to the fact of, it's hard for me not to say that I think we should have probably, I know, the problem is, it takes longer. It's going to take, probably, we might be able to do it the first meeting in June, we might have to decide the second meeting in June unless we have a special meeting in between, which we may have, to do this, to appoint someone. But that's the difficulty I have, Mr. Growcock, again, not personally with Mr. Davids, but with the process, that I think perhaps in these times, we need to be a little bit more transparent, a little bit more open, and Mr. Davids may, if he wants to apply, is certainly willing to, welcome to do that, and he may be the candidate we choose. But I think it's just hard for me right now to say from the dais that we're going to pick Mr. Davids or anyone else directly for this position this evening.
Okay. Ms. Royce, do you have any comments? Okay. We'll get to the public speaker after Mr. Royce makes a comment.
I guess I could, I could talk about being mayors like buying a boat. You know, it's, you know, the best day in your life is when you buy a boat. The next best day is when you get rid of a boat. And I kind of make a joke a little bit. When I was mayor for the year, it was great honor, just had a ball doing it, just dealing with the public and all the activities as mayor and leading the meetings. It's also nice the day after when you're not mayor, and you don't have to read every paper by 7:00 a.m., and the press calls you on tough questions and things like that. And what I'm leading to is, all four of us here are qualified. We are all good mayors. We represent the voters who voted for us, and so that's really important. We are up here because the voters have voted for us, and I will even say that Mr. Klein is qualified, he is the mayor now, for how he thinks, and even the memorial that he spoke at a week ago Friday. There is no one that could have done as good of a job speaking and representing the city for our past mayor. So what I'm saying is, the voters have voted for us, we're all qualified, we're not in the ego of becoming mayor, because we've all been mayors, although Andy's only been mayor for a few days. And as far as Tom Davids, I would be the first to say, a great man in the city of San Carlos. But I've gotten calls over the past week, and I wouldn't want to limit or focus or have someone here on the dais pointing a finger at Tom Davids, because there's a woman out there, I talked to her, that could be very, very qualified. Lee Thompson, six, seven years ago, was a great opportunity to represent the greater inside, and he just wanted temporary. He didn't want to be on council. And so why limit yourself? Why, as far as a temporary position, let's look at some opportunity where someone has a real interest in making a contribution to city council? I think we could staff the mayor with four qualified people that we have up here right now.
Okay. Mr. Rubens, since we had public comment and the public speaker already spoke, are we able to reopen it, or is it our precedent to not?
You're the presiding officer of the meeting, and you could make a determination that the public comment period is closed. That wasn't explicitly stated, so you might want to just provide the public an opportunity to make their final comments before you vote, because right now, as it stands, you have a motion nomination, excuse me, nominations do not require a second. You've provided discussion for council members, and then I think we have some public comment people want to talk on your discussions, so I think that's how we stand.
Okay. Ms. Gair, since you didn't really take up your time, feel free to come up.
Hi, Gail Goes again. I'm sort of troubled by the fact that you nominated Randy. He's allied with you, and it seems like that just keeps the fractured nature of this thing going. I think you should nominate someone who's not allied with you, and someone who is not just mayor right before it went there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gair. Okay. Ms. Bell, do you have a final comment? This will be our last comment, then we can vote on the motion.
I agree with the previous speaker. I think we do need to bring this city together. There's a big, big rift, and I think having Tom Davids or the fantastic woman who wants to apply, or someone who has not been part of this big rift, is much better for the city. We can last another two weeks with an acting mayor until we get the full council and get somebody like Tom, who could step in and be mayor and not be allied with either side here. And it's not going to be Lee Thompson, he can't do it. I talked to him, he said he's gotten promoted since then, and it's just too much of a conflict. I would have loved to have him or Tom, but he can't do it, so. But I'm all for having someone who can bring this town together, and I don't think Randy Royce is that person, and I don't think Andy's that person either.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Okay, my only comments are, we haven't really punted on anything here as a council over the past year and a half, and I don't see any particular reason to punt on it now. The four of us were elected. I would have a real issue appointing someone as the head of a council who hasn't gone through an election for their term. I think that's a dangerous precedent. I think we should appoint someone possibly to fill the seat, but to fill the seat and then take control of the council, I think the voters aren't really being listened to then. And I think we can, we have four people up here who can do the job. I have a room myself, so we have three people who can do the job. And I think Randy is the one, one of the speakers alluded to, that I'm allied with Randy. I believe I'm allied with all four people up here. We all want what's best for San Carlos, we just have different ways of getting it. There's no alliances or sworn pledges to each other. We all got up here to do a job. Sometimes we disagree, sometimes we agree, and we can't even believe that we agree on things. I don't, definitely don't think there's any allegiances. So I'm going to have my motion stand, and I would like to call the question with Ms. Bowlen.
Can I make another comment?
Yes, Mr. Russo.
You know, the difficulty is, I agree with your point about a new person. It could be Tom, it could be anybody. A new person coming in, I don't think that's appropriate, to be quite honest, because it might not be someone who's ever been, had a government thing, and it is a lot of responsibility to do this. And as you mentioned, we were elected to do this. Having said that, my thought process also goes to the fact of, we can wait for the fifth, we could appoint the fifth person, and then we'd have five people, and somewhere we'd get three votes. That, though, might have a little bit of a weakness in the fact that that individual, well, it has two sides. Number one, they'd have no concept of who's on first and what's on second, or who's with or against anyone. The good news, and the bad news, the same thing, no idea who we are, perhaps. May not know us as well as we know each other. So I'm torn here. There's no question that any of us, as you mentioned, can do the job. I'm just, I'm just, I mean, the ship doesn't sink if you stay as acting mayor, okay? I have no problem with that whatsoever. I don't know how that fifth person is going to impact it positively if we wait. That's the struggle I'm dealing with right now, so I just wanted to share that.
Mr. Royce?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I heard it, but it's very important, I want to hear it again. So my understanding, if we had a split vote, Mr. Klein would become mayor if he changed his position and accepted that position. Is that true?
I'd be acting mayor.
No, he would remain as acting mayor until you select.
That's what I mean, acting mayor.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd remain vice mayor, essentially. Mr. Growcock?
I just wanted to add that with regards to Mr. Davids, I did give him a call, to be fair, and let folks know, and I just talked to him about the idea at first of coming back onto the council, and of course, he was interested in that. I think everybody knows, Tom keeps up on the issues. He was at our last planning meeting that we had, our strategic planning, and I think it's actually hard for him to get away from what it is we're doing up here. And then I'd given it some thought, and I asked him during the conversation also about if he'd be willing to serve as mayor, and he said yes. That's the only thing I talked to him about. I didn't ask him about any issues, any of the things that we've been going through. In fact, I know quite frankly, you know, and I think the community knows this, and I don't think it's come to anybody's surprise, you know, one of the, one of the issues that we have facing us right now, and we just met in close session on, is Wheeler Plaza. I've not been a big fan of Wheeler Plaza over the years. In fact, people remember, the first year I ran for council, I had some depictions of Wheeler Plaza that didn't go over too well for a few in the community. And Tom, on the other hand, is a big fan of Wheeler Plaza. But that's just an example of where he and I disagree on something. So suffice to say, I didn't talk with him on issues. I don't really care about issues. Again, my, my thing is that I see us as, we're a bit of a wounded animal, and bringing someone back onto the council who, again, is very well-respected in this community, I think, I don't think you could go up to too many people who know, you know, politics and follow government in San Carlos and say, what do you think of Tom Davids? And they're going to go, oh, he's a terrible guy. Everybody respects the man. He's been through a lot of ups and downs with council, with previous employers, and I've heard all kinds of stories about Tom, and he always seems to be the guy coming out, emerging from everything, wearing the white suit and being seen as, you know, the good guy. So that's why I thought of him, and that's, that's why I had the idea that I did. To Mr. Royce's comment, you know, about serving and so forth, I agree with you, you know, the best day as mayor is the first day, and the second-best day is the last day. But I just look at this as, you know, what we're trying to do here is, you know, get somebody who can do the job on a temporary basis until we have an election in November, and then, you know, we can move on from there. So that's how I look at it, and I stand by my, my recommendation. And in fact, if it would help then, I would put a competing motion that at least we hold off on this question until we can go through the appointment process. If Mr. Davids emerges through that appointment process, then we can, we can discuss this further. So I would put the motion out that we hold on item 7A and give direction, take up item 7B, and after we talk about that, we can give direction to staff.
All right, well, since that's not an appointment, that would require a second, correct, Mr. Rubens?
Yeah, that would, I'm just, I'm not sure that it takes precedence over the nomination. Let me just take a quick look.
Perhaps I could say that.
Yeah, I'm just, I just found the answer, excuse me. The nominations are not amendable. They are debatable, but they're not amendable.
Okay, so we have.
I could put a competing nomination, though.
You could put a competing nomination.
I would, I would put forward that we nominate no one, and secondly, that we take up, or that we move on to item 7B.
Mr. Rubens, can you nominate a non-entity?
Well, I think the best procedure would be to take, take a vote on the first nomination, because again, it's, I think that would be like an amendment to the motion. It's a substitute, you're trying to substitute a motion. So I would say, vote on the nomination that's on the floor and see where that goes, and then by, either by not agreeing on someone, or that would be inaction, and it would, we'd automatically continue this to a future meeting.
Okay.
One more quick question. One more quick question. After we, if we appoint a mayor this evening, we're also going to be appointing a vice mayor?
Well, not necessarily. That'd be up to the city council. You will actually have a vice mayor. You have a vice mayor right now.
I understand that. So we're not required to...
You're not, you're not required to appoint a new vice mayor...
Thank you.
...in place of an existing appointment.
Okay, I didn't know, I wanted to make sure we...
How is it on our agenda? I didn't notice that.
Well, we had to agendize that, that particular way in, in the chance that...
Okay, I understand, I just wanted to make sure.
And Mr. Moppy, a follow-up question. If we do not select a mayor tonight, we won't be electing a vice mayor because again, we have a vice mayor, correct?
Well, I would assume that if you can't select a mayor, you were going to have the same exact problem selecting a vice mayor, since the vice mayor would be serving in the role as mayor.
Okay, well, we will call the question. Oh, Mr. Royce.
Yeah, just one, one last thought here is that, I'd like to make a comment to Mr. Growcott. There is a difference in approach here. My comments have a tremendous respect and trust that one of the four of us can all be mayor. Again, because the voters have voted for us, you've seen us act and we're very qualified. By bringing someone else in, it doesn't matter who that person is, I believe what I'm hearing is that we are not qualified. There's someone out there that they want because there's not the trust, there's not the relationship, there is not the confidence in the three other people or himself to become mayor. And so when we talk about a healing city and we talk about how people very, in their own style, support the team and get things done, I don't want to spend a lot of time, but this is very consistent with a long-term lack of support of what council does, many times with our 4-0 votes. So I just want to be very clear, I'm sorry, Matt, but I think you're very consistent and you're consistent now and I'm very disappointed in your lack of support for any of these people to be mayor. And I want to say that before the vote because I, there may be a motion for me to be mayor. It's, it's not going to be a great disappointment if I'm not or I'd be thrilled and honored if I was, but before that, I just wanted to speak my piece on supporting the team.
That deserves a comment back, I think, if I may.
Let's keep it quick so we can actually move on to it tonight. But, Mr. Growcott?
Number one, I don't mean to say by my confidence in Mr. Davids that I don't have confidence with any of us up here. However, again, this is, it's a temporary position and the way I look at it is, you know, we've all had our, our rotation, as it were, through, you know, when we got elected and so forth. And as you've said, Randy, we've all had a chance to, to serve as mayor at least one time. And to me, it's more of a, a way to keep the process clean, keep us in our typical rotation and timing. And even, and one of the things I didn't say earlier is even when this first happened and I realized, well, we're going to have to select somebody as mayor, and I was thinking of Mr. Klein's situation and I thought, hmm, that either means a stint as mayor for six months and then you move on, or it means a stint as mayor of 18 months, which is unprecedented. And so I don't mean any disrespect, Randy, to yourself or anybody up here. What I was more looking at was how is, what is a way that we can fill this position and not disrupt the process that we're all used to and the timing that we're all used to, that's all.
Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry, one more, I'm sorry. This is important.
I know, I know.
It's important and it's a very tough decision that we have to make, that none of us would really like to make. So, you know, I'm sorry, but we're all going to have to make it. The difficulty I have, not, I, I take both sides of, of your side. Any of us could be mayor, should the, should the fifth person, whoever he or she may be, literally doesn't have a team, doesn't have any, is, is, is a blank slate. So when they come up here, they'll just vote for one of us. And, and so one of us will be mayor. You know, and so I don't, that's where I come from, not, and I didn't talk to Mr. Davids and I, that's why I said I can't support that, because I think it needs to be an application process. But having said that, there'll be five people and one of us will get three votes. And whoever that individual is will be, will be the acting mayor for six months. That's, that's the, you know, with four, that's why four is going to not work, that's why we can't have four. We've got to have five for many, many of these issues, even some possibly tonight, that are going to be, going to be tied. So that's where I'm, I'm struggling with that. It's not because Randy can't do the job, of course he can do the job, he did a great job. It's just that I don't know whether we should decide it and whether, or whether it should be five people and that other individual, whether they know any of us or know none of us. They're, they're going to be up here, they're going to be on the dais, we're going to have appointed them, all of us are going to be appointed them, that individual's going to need three votes. Not just one of us is going to pick that person. If one of us picked the person, that'd be a whole nother game. But three of us are going to pick that individual, whoever that man or woman is. And that individual can then vote here, his or her conscience on who he, he or she thinks is mayor. So I don't know, that's where I'm, again, no disrespect to you at all, Randy, and you, you know, we've been friends a long time. It's just, I'm, I'm, I keep coming back to this transparency of making sure that this thing is, is squeaky clean to the fact of that fifth person who has no agenda and will three of us will pick him, that individual. That's where I think I'm, I'm leaning tonight, so, anyway.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine.
Thank you for letting me go on.
Now, let's see if we can get three votes tonight. Ms. Bowlen.
Councilmember Grisilli?
I'm sorry, could you please...
Would you repeat the motion, or the nomination?
Nomination for Randy Royce as mayor for the remainder of 2011.
Uh, no.
Councilmember Growcott?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes. The motion fails. Are there any other motions? If not, we will postpone this until the selection, and remember, it's only a possible selection of a fifth council member is made, if there's no other motions. Is that okay, Mr. Rubens?
That's okay. If the council pleases, would you like us to put this agenda item on your next regular meeting, this item 7A?
I think it'll be dictated on when we schedule the possible selection of a fifth council member, whenever that fifth council member will be sworn in. So if that's okay with the council, we'll just have that dictate it. Okay. We will move on to item 7B. And 7B is the discussion of a possible appointment for the vacant position of Mr. Ahmad. Mr. Rubens?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Klein. There's, I prepared a staff report that summarizes the procedure that you have before you. Municipal Code Section 2.08030 sets forth a procedure that's dictated by state law under which San Carlos has decided to, that its procedure when there's a vacancy in the council is to, one, call a special election and then have the option of appointing someone to fill the vacancy until that special election occurs. In this case, we have kind of a unique circumstance because this special election date, if we were going to have one, would have to be November 8th, which is the same date for the regular municipal election, which coincides also with the, what would have been the end of Mayor Ahmad's term. So my opinion is that it would be futile and unnecessary for you to call a special election tonight, even though the code uses the word "shall," it wouldn't serve any purpose. There would be no term to fill that is the purpose for that code section. So my advice is not to call, but adopt the resolution that I've attached to the staff report. It just makes a determination that the special election is not necessary. There's some judicial maxims that kind of apply here. The law does not nor request idle acts. I think that would be an idle act if you called a special election tonight.
Please, Chair?
Yes, Mr. Growcott?
I do have a question on that, though.
Yeah, sure.
I understand what you're saying about an idle act. However, if, if things hadn't happened the way they did, Mr. Ahmad would be running for reelection in November, all chances, you know, would have been that.
He could have pulled papers in August, yeah.
He could have pulled papers and he probably would have, knowing Mr. Ahmad and what his, you know, his goals were and so forth. Would it be an idle action to go ahead and call a special election, just to, you know, in honor of Mr. Ahmad and highlighting the fact that whoever, you know, that, that someone's going to get elected to the council and in some regards, it is a, it is a replacement of someone who passed while in office? Would that be considered idle?
Well, I think it would, I wouldn't use the term idle for it, but I think it would be symbolic at most because that seat, that term expires when the election results are certified.
Understood, yeah.
And to call the special election, the point I'm making is that there's no, because it has to be on November 8th and it coincides with the regular election for the same seat, there is no vacancy to fill by the special election. So I think you have to have the regular election.
Sure.
The special election, by virtue of the language in the code, says you're required to do one, but I think you'd have more confusion and, and difficulty. And in, in, by calling a special election, it's just an act, I just don't think it's something that is necessary at all because you're filling the exact same seat at the exact same time.
I just thought I asked the question. You're, you're correct in, in your estimation of what I said, that it would be symbolic.
Okay, are there any other questions for staff? Mr. Grisilli?
Yes. If, if, would you say that we would pass or not pass, or would I say, consider this resolution first and then, assuming we approve this resolution, which is calling the, the election unnecessary, then we would go to how we would fill the seat? Or would we talk about filling the seat first and then go to this resolution?
I, I think you would go to the resolution first because that's the way the code reads.
Okay, fine, thank you.
So the second part of the staff report talks about the option that you have in filling a seat, filling the vacancy for the remainder of the term. In the past, as is brought up earlier, council has noticed that for, for nominations or for people putting their name forward, and it can happen fairly quickly if it's the desire of the council to have it happen quickly. There's no parameters of how long you have to wait or how long you have to keep the nomination period open or, or the, the application process open. The last time you, this happened, the council, I think, interviewed, I think it was 12 people in one evening. I'm not even sure it was a special meeting, but it, but it could be a special meeting, it could be at your next regular meeting even, because there's sufficient, there's probably sufficient time to get the word out to do that. But, so that's, that's an option again, you don't have to fill the vacancy, but it's something that's within your purview to, to get that process going. So the second part would be to discuss that process that you would like to move forward on, on the filling of the vacancy.
Okay, are there any other questions? We'll move to public comment then. I only have one speaker slip, that's Gail Goos for 7B. Are you, do you want to speak, Gail, or are you done? You can comment on the possible appointment of a city council member.
First of all, would it be appropriate to mention a name and a...
You're free to talk about whatever you want relating to this agenda.
Well, I assume anyone who's interested will make his or her interest known, but I hope that if you don't choose Tom, that you would choose someone with a background in science, because you're, you're missing that now. And Omar is a great resource for that. So that's what I wanted to say. I, I have a person in mind, but I'm sure he'd be too busy, but that would be Scott Marsters.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goos. Are there any other, is there any other public comments? We don't have any more slips. Seeing no other public comment, the public comment period is closed. Counsel, I would hope we would take up the resolution first, as Mr. Ruben suggested, and then we'll go into a discussion of how we want to appoint the seat. So can we get a motion for the resolution?
Mr. Klein, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2011...
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Is there a second? Oh, you have to read it, sorry.
Read it.
Resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos, considering the call of a special election to fill the remainder of term due to vacancy pursuant to Municipal Code Section 2.08.030 and determining that such a call is unnecessary.
Seconded by... Seconded by Mr. Royce, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Bowlen?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to a discussion about possibly filling the rest of Mayor Ahmad's term. So is there anyone who would like to kick this discussion off?
Well, I'd like to, myself, well, first I have a question for staff and that is, what do we have on our next agenda? Do we, we have some forecast of what that is?
I don't have it in front of me, so I can't get into specifics, but, I mean, it's, it's sort of a typical meeting in terms of, of size and scope, so, you know, I'd say it's about a two and a half hour meeting, three hour meeting.
Well, without knowing the, the specifics, I would like to get the person, whoever it's going to be, on board quickly. And so I would even suggest that we go ahead and do something, even if it were in a week and a half, but something that's going to be prior to our next meeting. Do the interviews, you know, conduct the interviews, make the decision that night on the selection, so that person can be possibly sitting on the dais for the next council meeting.
Okay, Ms. Royce?
Yeah, I think that's great. Our next meeting is three weeks from now, usually it's every two weeks, but because of the way it works here, on June 13th. So I would like to provide at least a two-week window for people to apply in case someone's gone for a week, a two-week application, and then on that June 13th day would be a day that we would interview and select a temporary council person for city council.
Mr. Grisilli?
I would tend to agree with Mr. Royce, except for the fact that I think, I know we all hate to come to special meetings, but I think selecting a person and then, I don't, I'm not sure if that night is the night I want to have that individual seated. I think it would be, it would be a little bit, if we could, so, I don't have a problem with the two weeks, maybe cut it down by a day or two, but the two weeks, but then have a, a special meeting in between so that literally that individual is, has a chance to look at the agenda? That, because how are they going to look at the agenda? They're not going to even have a, you can't send out, or you could, I guess, give everybody a copy of the agenda and all the questions and, to me, at least give them three or four days to be able to talk to staff, to, to ask questions about it.
Anyone who'd like to call a speeding, a special meeting in the week of June 6th?
Well, somewhere in between, before, three or four days before, at least, or five days before our, our, our thing. That's, and then it gives us, that individual, assuming that individual has never served before, and it may be that person. Now, an experienced person wouldn't necessarily have that learning curve, but still, these are new items that they haven't seen before, whatever is on the agenda. So that, that would be my thought process, but I'm willing to hear other people talk.
Fine. Well, associate of staff, is, are you amenable to that? Could we have a possible week and a half window where we would interview the 6th, 7th, or 8th of June and make a decision on a special meeting?
We can certainly work on that. I think typically with these meetings, the biggest stumbling block is your calendars, so we'll, we'll start working on it tomorrow with you in terms of identifying a date that week that would, would potentially work. We could begin advertising the position immediately. And in fact, I think this meeting is already advertising the position.
So we could have a, a closing window of, say, June 3rd, which would be the Friday going into that week of applications, and then we would move forward with a special meeting sometime that week, correct?
Uh, yep, that would be the case.
And we could, I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, because I, I think the difference between what Mr. Grisilli was talking about and perhaps what you were talking about, Mr. Royce, was when we actually make that selection. And I, my preference would be to conduct the interviews, maybe take a little break, whatever, discuss it, but make that selection...
Right.
...at the meeting that is the special meeting.
Special meeting, exactly.
Which is, which is, the agenda of the special meeting is, conduct the interviews, make the selection.
That's what Mr. Grisilli was saying.
Exactly, now we'll give four or five days to that individual to be able to interface with staff and, and bring themselves hopefully up to quasi-speed on the agenda items.
So do we need a motion to that effect or just direction to staff?
I, I think in this case, a motion would be appropriate.
Okay, so can we have a motion, Mr. Grisilli, for your compliments?
Uh, Mr. Klein, I would make a motion that we have a, an application process beginning tomorrow morning and extending till... What date did you mention? I don't...
June 3rd, it's a Friday, 5:00 PM.
June 3rd at 5:00 PM. And then have a meeting scheduled for the week of June 6th.
And we'll work the staff, yeah.
And our calendars, hopefully the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, hopefully one of those first three days, or at least four days, to have a special meeting to interview and to select the council member.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Growcott, is there any other discussion? Okay. The only discussion I would like to say is I, I think it's important that we get out there, and I'm sure the rest of the council agrees, that I would ask that these applicants give us some sort of meaning if they plan on running for election, because I will have, I'll make no qualms about it, I will not appoint someone who plans... I'll make no qualms about it, I will not appoint someone who plans on running for election, because I believe it gives you a leg up into the election process, and I think then it would be politics, and we need to find someone who will fill the role for the six months and do their job just for that six months, and then have a fair election in the fall, and I believe it's unfair if we appoint someone who plans on running for the seat as well. So, with that, Mr. Brokot?
Just a clarification on that, I think Mr. Rubin's is.
Well, we can't ban anyone from running for the election, but I would ask that they could give their word.
So, I just wanted to clarify that that's your, your preference alone and not necessarily the preference of the whole council, nor is it something that we can legally bind somebody to?
That's correct.
Just for clarification, as I recall, the last vacancy that occurred, the notice actually had that provision as a request. It wasn't a requirement, but it was a request in the actual notice, so that's something that you could do tonight.
I would amend, I would amend my motion to have that as a request, because I agree with Mr. Klein, I think it should, it should be, there should be no incumbency when the, when the election comes in November. But again, it's a request, it's, that's all it is.
Okay, and we don't.
As you said, Mr. Brokot, it's not, not binding.
We don't need a second for an amendment by the proposer of the motion, correct?
Yeah, I think, I think you do. Well, how I'd read it is it was, the motion was withdrawn and then a new motion.
Right, it's a motion, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have a second for the new motion?
Andy?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Royce, and we will call the question, Ms. Ballen.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Brokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay. We will move on to item 8, reports to council. Mr. Moore?
Thank you.
Item 8A, monthly update, fire and emergency services in San Carlos.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Council has in front of them a, the monthly report for May on fire and emergency services. We do have a PowerPoint if you want to go through it, given the size of the audience. However, I'll point out to you, given the number of meetings you've had recently, I'm not sure there's a whole lot of new information. Two things I did want to highlight for you, first of all, we, as I think the staff report indicates, since the council unanimously decided to contract with Redwood City on the hybrid model, we've accelerated our meeting schedule to at least weekly. We're now on track to bring you the contract with Redwood City for that new model on June 27th, which would be your second meeting in June. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, which I don't believe made the report, is we continue to get information requests from other cities about our model. We've had a number of cities that were looking at mergers that are now looking at perhaps doing something different, looking more at the hybrid model. So, we are working with them and providing that information, both the cities in this county and frankly around the Bay Area, and will continue to do so. So, those are the only two updates from what we have. Again, I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. We will get into council questions, then we will have public comment, and then if there's any discussion. Are there any council questions?
Just repeat again, on June 27th, you'll be bringing us?
The contract with Redwood City for the management of the new San Carlos Fire Department.
Okay.
That's the tentative date.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, is there any public comment for this report? Seeing none, there's not much of a discussion, so we will just accept the report. Okay, moving on. Item 8B is strategies to implement the partnership policy and engaging community groups. Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor and members of the council. If you recall, this is one of the objectives identified in the strategic planning retreat held on February 18th, 2011, which requested that we identify at least two strategies to implement the partnership policy that was adopted by council in February of 2011. As you'll see in the staff report, there are two recommendations for strategies. One is fairly simple, it's taking the show on the road. What we would do is we would provide information about current events in hoping that we would get volunteers, particularly community-based organizations, to help supplement or augment existing programs or special events. This would include taking them to community service organizations such as Rotary, Lions, Colonnus, and providing them information about the event itself and encouraging cosponsorship for those particular events. Of course, that, the list can be much broader than that, but the idea is to engage these community-based organizations in helping out with these events, to make these events less costly and more vibrant for the community. The other strategy is the establishment of a part-time volunteer coordinator position, which doesn't mean that it's a volunteer position, but it does mean it's somebody in charge of volunteers, and this is a strategy that would help try to engage the community in volunteerism. And again, there's, there are a number of events that we currently sponsor and conduct that certainly could help volunteers across the board and across the community to help alleviate some of the costs that are incurred in offering those events and would also be an enhancement to those events. As we go forward, we see that we're developing more community events, family-wide events, we're having events at much larger scale, and I think it's the council's wish to continue with this, and so one of the strategies is to identify some specific staff time to engage volunteers and to recruit volunteers and hopefully build up a large volunteer base to supplement and possibly expand the existing services. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we will get any questions from council, public comment, and then any discussion. Mr. Brokot?
Had you, Mr. Long, looked at this, instead of having a part-time employee, having somebody that you would contract to, to do item number two?
Well, that's certainly a possibility. As a matter of fact, it can be on a per diem or as-needed basis, and they work out as a better model.
The man who opposed contracting, you know, brings this up, but I'm not really opposed to contracting, there were some things that I was opposed to, but I think this is a perfect opportunity perhaps for that. I guess we could discuss that on council, but you're open to that idea?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so we can discuss that.
Okay, Mr. Griselli?
So, you'd be coming back to us to adjust the budget, or is it already in your budget, or?
It's not in the budget, it's a strategy that we can employ, you can, I'm waiting to receive direction from council. If you think that's a good idea, we can go ahead and flush this out a little bit more.
I look at the city attorney, I don't know that we can even, I don't know what our, what our limitations are tonight on doing, I apologize, but.
It's okay.
It's not on the agenda, so I, I don't think we can, I don't know what we can do. What can we do? Can we give?
We can provide direction to staff.
We can provide direction?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would help us inform, in this instance, possibly.
Okay, so in other words, if you off. I like the idea, how about I like the idea?
That would help.
Okay, good, thank you.
That helps.
All right, is there any, is there any other questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I like the report, I like the direction, and we're just reminded with hometown days, all of our volunteer groups out there and everybody wanting to do activities and have stuff going on in town, and we definitely have the people organize it a little bit, or we'll, we'll have a great job being down here. Thank you.
Not to nitpick with my council members, but we're in question time, so let's keep it to questions, because I'd like to have public comment before we have any discussion. So, since it seems that there's no other questions, is there any public comment on this report? Seeing none, now we can discuss, so I hear from two council members that they're liking to move forward. Mr. Brokot has a different idea?
I, I like the concept, I would just, before it comes back to us, I guess it's going to come back to us as an action item, I would like the alternative, maybe alternative number three is a modification of number two, which is, could we, could we look at a contractor per diem type thing?
Okay, Mr. Long, you will take care of that?
I certainly will.
Okay, seeing that, then go forth.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 8C, progress report on economic development plan 2010 to 2013. Mr. Sewicki?
and Housing Manager, here to present a progress report on the three-year economic development plan for 2010, 2013, which was approved by council last year. The 2010-13 plan is organized into three major action categories, planning and analysis, steps are necessary to inform the implementation efforts, and continual evaluation helps refine and redirect our efforts. However, the major thrust of this plan is to proactively build awareness and market the assets our city offers to both consumers and businesses in a variety of market segments and through a variety of outlets. In doing so, we seek to improve the prospects for existing businesses while attracting others that will complement and diversify our base. A big focus for staff is on new development, which increases the property tax base and increases economic activity for new residents, from new residents and businesses. It also creates commercial space that better meets 21st century business needs. Lastly, capital improvement projects provide the necessary infrastructure to promote growth. The complete plan contains another 14 supporting action steps. These are provided in your packet in attachment two, which is actually a grid of all the action steps and a status and revised timing for completion of each of those from, from last year. As a general summary, I can say that progress has been made on most all of the action steps to varying degrees, but staff resource constraints have made it difficult to achieve the original timelines presented in, in the plan from last year. In presenting this report, I must acknowledge the abiding spirit of Mayor Maud, who took a very strong interest in economic development and advancing this plan, as well as positioning San Carlos to attract new businesses and expand opportunities for growth. He wanted to be sure that this progress report was among the council's six-month strategic objectives for this period. The next two slides include major accomplishments so far this fiscal year. They include attracting development of In-N-Out Burger on the Holly and Industrial site and advancing the proposal to redevelop Wheeler Plaza. We've also completed key pieces of planning and analysis and research and are moving into the implementation phase of the branding awareness and marketing campaign, which is actually on item 11, I believe 11A on your agenda tonight. Our contract with Buckston Analytics helps us be smarter and more focused with our recruitment efforts, and will provide tools to make our case with top prospects. In the 2008 economic development plan, the EDAC added goals to measure our progress. They focused on three key fiscal measures for economic development results, sales tax, property tax, and hotel tax. The first major fiscal goal was to achieve growth in taxable sales on an average annual basis that exceeds the growth in the county by 1%, by at least 1%. Because broader economic conditions will have the greater, will have a greater influence on the rise and fall of taxable sales, we felt it made more sense to measure our results relative to the county, to other cities in the county. In the first fiscal year after this goal was set, we were 14% better than the county average, but we fell further than the county in the last fiscal year. A lot of that has to do with an imbalance in reporting, mostly related to Tesla Motor Vehicles. Over the two full years, we're still averaging 6% better than the growth rate in the county, but this fiscal year-to-date, we continue to lag the county. The second major goal was to achieve growth in assessed property value on an average annual basis that exceeds the county by 1%. As with sales tax, macro real estate markets will determine the direction of property values more than anything we could do. However, new development, redevelopment of properties will help to grow the assessed value base. Here again, we've exceeded the county growth rate by more than 1%. The third major goal was to activate development of a hotel at the Landrock site near Holly and Industrial by 2013, and based on a conservative estimate of 150 rooms, occupied 50% of the time at $150 a night, we thought that we could get back to the high point of our TOT, which was in 2001, when we received more than $1 million in hotel tax. Unfortunately, with the crash of 2008, the potential for new hotel development evaporated, and interest is only slowly starting to return in hotel development. We won't realize this goal by 2013, but we still hold out hopes that we could do it by 2015. In the 2010 economic development plan last year, EDAC added some absolute dollar goals in light of the projected $3.5 million deficit we were facing at the time. They wanted to know what growth rate it would take to grow our way back to a sustainable budget. To add that volume of revenue within, from these three sources, within three years would have required double-digit growth. However, with a healthy growth rate of 6% in property tax and sales tax, we could still add $4 million to our base by 2015. That is not so unreasonable if you consider that sales tax had been growing at a rate of 4% per year prior to the downturn, and property tax had exceeded 6% growth nine out of 10 years through 2008. For the coming fiscal year, these are the economic development priorities, completing site planning, deal negotiations, environmental review, and the entitlement process for a proposed Wheeler Plaza redevelopment, completing the brand identity process and launching an awareness campaign, using Buckston Analytics to find the best retailer matches and customize recruitment packages, conduct outreach to increase awareness and identify and market new, market space, existing and new space, complete the fiscal analysis to determine the best economic development opportunity sites, improve our website navigation and tools for economic development, and launch the facade improvement program. EDAC has forwarded this progress report to you for your review and acceptance. I'm available, available for any questions in coming that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, questions from the council? Mr. Brokot, or Mr. Royce?
First of all.
Just one, you just mentioned priorities, but also in the package, it brings up a few times the website, how you talk about it, website revisions and updates, and on page 10 of the actual report, it talks about the revisions and updates. Do we have, and also, of course, jumping ahead on agenda item 11A, where Look is going to, we're going to be talking about Look and what they're doing, it's in there also. Do we have the resources, or is that something that we'll contract out for, or who's going to be doing that? Because I know we used to have a web developer, a webmaster in our city, which I don't believe we have anymore. So, where, how does all that get done?
There are a couple of pieces of it. One piece is just merely, and what I was referring to was just the economic development side of the website.
I understand that, I understand that. Who's going to do it?
There's a, there's a development of a new skin of our website, which would be, you know, designing something that matches the new branding campaign.
Okay.
And then the third piece of it is, I think Assistant City Manager Moore would probably be better to speak to, which is a new backbone, I think, to the, to the website, which is something much, I believe, much further down the road, but is also on the strategic objectives.
Well, well, one of the things that, that we've had on the back burner for a while now is the current city website software vendor has an upgrade, a major upgrade that we haven't implemented yet, that would give us some new features, including some mobile web features, and what I thought was a while back, was that once we got on the other side of the permit project, and once the branding was in place, we would launch the newer software along with this, as Mark indicated, the new Look or Skin, as it were, and we thought that would be a nice way to refresh the website. At that point, we, in theory, I suppose, could also look at tweaks. I know that during one of the council's strategic plan sessions, there was some discussion among the council about ideas for changing the navigation and some of that. So, I appreciate Councilmember Royce's sensitivity to staff resources, and I think we're certainly going to look at that along with Ms. Mendenhall and her staff and Jasmine, but we think that we can make some not only visual improvements, but also some software improvements that, within the bandwidth of staff.
Thank you. And Mr. Brokot, do you have any questions?
I had a couple of questions, and then I was hoping there were some things we might discuss as a council. The, the question I have is what kind of response there was internally with staff, and, you know, we lost Tesla, you mentioned that, we also lost Nektar, and then, you know, just looking at it from the perspective of what are, all of our losses have been, we've, not we as a city necessarily, but yes, we as a city have stumbled on Palo Alto Medical Foundation, and I say we haven't because it's, it's not much that we can control there, but when you look at the overall picture of where we thought we were going and what we thought was going to have happened by now, you know, we just have an empty sight out there, and it's, and it's tough to accept that, right? So, I guess my question is, you know, looking at it kind of like from an athlete, when you would lose a wrestling match, you know, you'd look back at your match and go, okay, what did I do wrong? You know, how did I lose that? My question is, and maybe we don't want to expose all this right now here, but what, what went on with staff when we lost Tesla and Nektar? Have we looked, have we evaluated ourselves, I guess, as city staff, and even, you know, and that could come to us, too? Where we missed the boat on that, how did they get away from us, and what do we need to do better next time to, you know, keep a big fish like that? You know, I, I hate to expose everything right here, but, you know, it's, it's something that comes to mind.
Well, I think both of those situations were beyond our means to contain them. Tesla was growing much larger than San Carlos could provide space for, and Nektar got an extremely good sweetheart deal to move to Mission Bay, and there's no way that we could have provided any amount of incentives without bankrupting the city to, to keep them, keep them here for that. The good news with, with Nektar, they actually sold a big portion of their business, which does remain in San Carlos, and Novartis took over that, took over that.
I wasn't aware of that.
Part of that business and part of that space. There is, there is still vacancy there.
There is still vacancy there, but we did retain some of it.
And Mr. Suwicky, I don't bring that up to, like I say, I'm not trying to be critical or anything like that, but I just, the thought occurred to me, you know, we did lose these big things, and maybe, as you say, there was nothing we could have done, but it's always good to evaluate and look and ask the questions.
Are there any other questions from council members? Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Any public comment on Item 8C? Seeing none, we'll go to discussion. Mr. Grokot, you said you had some things you want to kick around.
Yeah, I understand this is not a, you know, it's not an action item, it's just a report, but at some point, I think, looking at, you know, this idea of hotel development has been on the table for a long, long time, and I kind of wonder myself if sometimes we're not so focused on that stock, as it were, and we may be missing other opportunities to have something happen in our gateway to the city that might be, that might bring us more valuation, more product, if you will, than just focusing on hotels. I'm not sure that's necessarily the right thing for us to do. The other comment I had was, I get troubled sometimes when we focus so much on sales tax, and that chart showed us that sometimes there's just absolutely nothing you can do about it. It just drops out of your, you know, slips between your fingers, and there it is. And I look at that myself, the way I used to look at grades when I was in school. I never focused on grades. I just focused on learning and, you know, preparing for my career and so forth, and, you know, good things happen when you do that. And I think sometimes we get so focused on sales tax and revenues, instead of focusing on things like, you know, what's really good for our city, our economy, business-to-business dynamics that could improve things. And so I just throw that out there, is I think sometimes what we put in as a grade is not necessarily what should be the right thing for a grade. And that's just my response to the report.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, let's just, we'll accept the report and move on. And I apologize, I'm glad the high schooler's left. I was ill-prepared to run this meeting tonight, as I figured we were going to pick a mayor, so I'm going to need five minutes to confer with our city clerk about running a public hearing. So we will have a five-minute recess. Sorry to everyone in the audience, she'll always come prepared. So we'll touch back in five minutes.
About 200,000 people. The SBSA Conveyance System and Treatment Plant requires major rehabilitation to continue reliably to meet state and federal discharge limits and also the terms of the Bay Keeper Consent Decree. Because of the capital needs exceed the cash flow available from the agencies in the SBSA, bond financing is required. The majority of the rate increases needed to pay for San Carlos's fair share of this upcoming bond financing. And the SBSA has estimated that San Carlos payments for debt service will increase by 302,000 in this fiscal year 2011-2012 and another 903,000 in fiscal year 2012-2013, for a total increase of 1.205 million. That would be the city's annual debt service obligation over the next two years. The sewer rates that are currently in effect are not sufficient to cover San Carlos's share of the payments for the next six years. The rate increase is also needed to build back up our reserves that we spent in the wastewater fund, which were significantly depleted in this last year with one-time costs associated to improve our sewer system in accordance with the terms of the Bay Keeper Decree. In fiscal year 2010-2011, one-time costs of 1.630 million were approved for mitigation payments, system-wide cleaning and inspection, an additional hydro flush truck inspection equipment, and a computerized maintenance and management system. All of these investments have had a beneficial effect on our sewer system as the number of sanitary sewer flows has decreased from 70 to 30 in this last year. The recommended rate increase hearing before you tonight has followed the state setting process established by Proposition 218. And following tonight's meeting, the next steps would be to bring the ordinance back on June 13th for a second reading if the council approves it, and then the rates would take effect in the 2011-2012 fiscal year. This slide shows the proposed rates for residential, commercial, institutional, and industrial property types based on the 7% increase, and we can go back to that if you like later. Sewer rates in San Carlos are and would continue to be comparable with neighboring agencies. At a current rate of $46.82 a month for a single-family residence, San Carlos is really in the median range of the 30 agencies that were surveyed there back in January of 2011. Rates would increase to $50.10 a month with the proposed change, but that would not change the relative position in San Carlos as compared with the other neighboring cities in the survey. At $48.72 a month, Redwood City has the next highest rates, but they have already adopted a multi-year increase of 9%. And Belmont has the next highest rates above that with $53.55 a month, but there again, they are also looking at multi-year rate increases to cover the capital costs of this The cost to provide sewer service is actively reviewed to ensure the most efficient use of funds and has benefited from reduced personnel costs that were negotiated by the city council with management and other personnel in the city. And the net effect is that the cost savings from this would be passed on and accounted for in the long-term financial plan. And so the recommendation is this evening to hold a protest hearing pursuant to Proposition 218, now as approved in March by the city council. We did send notices out to everybody in San Carlos and received 20 protests letters. And there you see the recommendation, the first component of that recommendation, and then the second component of the recommendation would be to introduce the ordinance to increase the sewer rates. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, before we get to questions, Mr. Savae, we are going to open the public hearing, and we'll invite the public to comment. I have no speaker slips at this time, so is there anyone who wishes to comment on the possible increase of sewer rates? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes, and we'd like to thank the 20 individuals who sent in protest letters. We did receive them and we have reviewed them, so we will go on to council questions. Mr. Savae? Councilmembers, do we have any questions? No? Okay, seeing none? Oh, Mr. Royce?
Yeah, just a recommendation, Mr. Savae, since I did mention that a month ago, when rates are reviewed next time, not this time, I'm comfortable with our 7% increase, we do not have rates per apartment, and other cities do. And I'm very interested, to be fair, someone who lives in a two-bedroom apartment, you know, they got a flush going on, they're running water down the sink, the building, entire building, as a commercial space, is being charged, but each unit is not being charged. So someone who lives in a house is actually paying $600 a month, someone who lives in an apartment isn't paying anything. And so I think from an equity point of view, I would like to look and see what other cities are doing. I do know there are others, I'm not sure if it's a majority of cities, but to really look at the driver of cost of what is creating water to our sewage and trying to be as equitable as we can to making sure that the user is paying for it. So put that on your file since you've just taken over that responsibility in the last week.
All right, thank you, Mr. Royce. Mr. Grocott, do you have anything? Okay, no questions. Thank you, Mr. Savae. So we will have a discussion or we will take a motion on the ordinance.
Mr. Klein, I'd like to introduce ordinance number?
1430.
1430?
Yes, sir.
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos amending Section 13.08.250 of the Municipal Code Sewer Service Charges and Fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Grocott. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion?
Just a quick comment. I have had opportunity, with respect to the 20 letters, and I understand people's concerns about these rates going up, but, you know, myself, I've been out there, done a tour, there's a lot of work going on, and then there's a lot of work going on in our streets, and it's, you know, unfortunately, it was something that was not paid very much attention to for many, many years, and we're paying, we're playing catch-up on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Grocott. Seeing no other comments, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 9B, hearing on 2011 solid waste rates pursuant to Prop. 218 and approval of resolution adopting proposed monthly solid waste rates.
Yes. That's right. Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor and members of council. Earlier this year, council held a hearing on the proposed solid waste rates on March 14th, and we went through those proposed rates in some detail. I'm not going to go through the rates in that detail again tonight, although we do have those slides if you wish to review it. I think the highlights of the rate setting this year is a little different than in past years, number one, because we're moving from a service provider that has a cost-plus structure to one that has a indexed structure, and two, because this year we have four components of the rate. We're not only paying for the costs of the prior provider, Allied Waste, but we're also providing rate coverage of the two new providers, Recology and South Bay Recycling. We're taking into account the cart migration of customers moving from larger cart sizes, which more than cover the cost of service, to smaller cart sizes, which do not cover full cost of service. And finally, we are funding, in the proposed rates, the wrap-up costs as currently projected for Allied Waste in terms of the balance account. As you see in the staff report, these four components equal a total of an 18.5% rate increase, as council will recall from our report. Last time, all of the other cities have now adopted rates, and the 18.5% rate increase is below the average of the SBWMA cities. We have received, at last count, 36 protest letters. It takes 5,538 to prevent the council from considering the rate increase. So given the rate letters received to date, if council wishes to proceed, you can proceed with the rate adjustments as proposed. The other item that we mentioned in the staff report, and we also mentioned in the notice, is that in addition to the rates as proposed, we also added the attachment queue rates to the hearing just to make sure that individuals had an opportunity to come on those as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Before we get to your questions, we are going to open public hearing, invite the public to comment. We have one speaker slip for Eduardo Samperio. Here's your opportunity, sir, and we will give you two minutes.
Members of the council, I've been living of San Carlos for about two and a half years, and I have had about, we all have had about three increases in our trash service. The amounts might not be significant, but the percentages are really high, 18.5%. I don't know, next time you go to the grocery store, if you pay 18.5% more for ham. The part I understand, the cost of gas is going up, we have new trash cans, I can understand everything on the letter, but the part that I just have a very hard time to understand, I just can't get my head around, is this is retroactive to January 1st, 2011, that's five months ago. The meeting with the council was in March, this letter was sent to the residents in Apple to tell us that we have to pay for the five months back. I just find that really difficult to understand. You know, you don't go to the store and they tell you, oh, it's $20 today, and you owe me $5 for, you know, for the last few months. The case of the rates, I think if they need to go up, you know, it's understandable, but why retroactive is, it's just, I mean, it's not fair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to close public hearing. So moved. Mr. Royce?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Moore, if you'd like to come back up, we sure will have questions. I know this is your favorite topic, Mr. Grisilli, so do you want to start us off?
No, I've vented my spleen, as they say last time, with this accounting quagmire, as I would call it, but again, we're getting out, we're slowly getting out of this accounting quagmire. You know, we're balancing, and we don't have to worry, in theory, we don't have to worry about a balancing account in 2012, correct, Mr. Moore? Unless it comes, unless the audit comes in against us, so to speak.
Correct.
It could come in for us.
That's correct.
So we might be able to actually lower rates? Oh, well, I wouldn't say that, but it would be less of an increase, I guess is probably what you're going to be saying?
Could be.
Yeah. It's just, we're trying, to me, 8.8% of this, half of it, almost half of it, is just trying to get out of just a woeful situation that we got ourselves into. So, like I said, I spoke last time, and no one wants to raise these rates. I read the letters today, and people on fixed income and whatever, it's, as the speaker said, it's not so much the dollars as it is the percentage, but if it doesn't come out, if we, if we, let's put it this way, one way or another, the citizens of San Carlos will pay for this, because if we don't have the rates, then the city will subsidize it and it will come out of the general fund, so. But I hope he understands that. Thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
We're asking questions?
Yeah, questions.
So I would like to ask a question on behalf of this gentleman. What if we did not do the retroactive piece?
If we did not did the retroactive piece, I guess we'd have to go back with our calculators to find out how much of a shortfall in rates that would generate. I think the first place that we would probably look is at the two balancing accounts that Mr. Grisilli just talked about. Hopefully, we would have enough to cover the first payment, because as Mr. Grisilli correctly points out, to the extent we don't have enough money in the rates to cover our costs, the difference comes out of the general fund.
And we don't know how much that is?
No, I haven't calculated that. We could if the council's interested, but we have not.
And based on some of the letters we received, what if we did change our pickup structure? I mean, some of the people are saying, and I agree with this, I mean, you know, you put out all these cans, half of them are empty. And I suppose you can go to smaller cans with all the different colors and so forth, if you're really that empty, but could we also, what would happen, I guess, if we decided, you know what, we're not going to run these trucks out there every, every week?
Well, a couple of thoughts. Number one, the cart migration that we're showing you is only through the start of the new service. There has been additional cart migration, i.e. people going to smaller carts since January 1. So there'll be an additional adjustment factor next year for that.
Adjustment factor is a nice term for rate increases.
Correct. Because again, that the 20 and 32-gallon size, those ratepayers are not paying the full cost of the service. And people are, as you suggest, Councilmember Grocott, trading down to smaller can sizes. Another observation I would make is, notwithstanding what the, some of the 36 folks here talked about in terms of, could you have less frequent service, most of the calls that we've received since January are people who are excited about having more frequent service, particularly on the recycling. So I guess you'd almost have to balance those two, but my feedback from the community suggests that there are probably more people who like the more frequent service than those who feel that perhaps it's too much service. They were looking forward, I guess I would say, to the service that kicked in on January 1. And certainly, we've seen a pretty significant jump in our recycling numbers, not only in San Carlos, but across the SBWMA as a result, and I'm sure you probably recall that it was only two or three years ago that we were under the state mandate, and now we're in compliance and actually above it. So there is some real value in ramping that up.
Those are all my questions.
Okay. Mr. Royce, do you have any questions?
No questions, been through this already a couple times, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for council discussion. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Okay.
Or a possible motion for the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Royce?
Resolution number 2011-35.
Resolution for the City Council, the City of San Carlos approving our increase in residential
and commercial solid waste rates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Grisilli. Any discussion?
I was just going to comment, I think this may be the first time we've gotten so many protest letters. I think, you know, the Prop. 218 process is a nice idea, it doesn't work. The threshold is way too high, but myself, I look at all these letters and I say, you know, there's probably more people behind each one of those letters, just like when you get a letter on anything, as a council member, you figure, you know, there's probably 100 people who, if they had the time, or would have thought of it, would have sent that letter. And so those 36 letters, to me, represent more than just 36 people. And I've read each one of them, I agree with a lot of their comments. To me, you know, being the, I can tell you guys, I probably bear the responsibility for going through the whole RFP process, because years ago, I went to Mr. Garvey and I said, when do we ever do this? And he said, never. And so that got the ball rolling, I guess. But in my book, I don't see it as better service. I don't like the fact that we have every week, I've said to the city manager, we seem to now have a problem, because when you drive around San Carlos, you see a lot of trashcans of all these various colors, and they're out there all the time, because people put them out, you know, we've got, I don't know how many routes we've got in town, but it seems to me when you drive around, you're always seeing trashcans. And when you have windy days like we have today, you see them blown over, you see trash in the street. I've watched these arms, and I can appreciate what this lady said the last time about the bag service. Thank you very much, some of the people are saying to me that I see downtown at the coffee shop, now you want me to pay more money, and you want me to buy bags to put my trash in and change my, my whole process of how I handle my trash. I, for one, am not very happy with what Recology has done and what we've gotten out of it, and I won't be voting for this as a, to be in compliance with my feelings and my beliefs on it.
Thank you, Mr. Grocott. Seeing no more comments, we will go to a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 10A, consideration of introducing an ordinance amending Section 2.24.140 and adding Section 2.24.155 to the San Carlos Municipal Code Regarding the Residential Design Review Committee.
Ms. Nelson? Good evening, council and acting mayor. Tonight is precipitated by the resignation of one of our RDRC, the Residential Design Review Committee members, who will be retiring in August. In your municipal code, the Residential Design Review Committee was set up in the zoning ordinance, and as you are aware, we're doing a comprehensive review of that, and you will see it later this summer. Our intent was to move the term and definition of Residential Design Review Committee from the zoning ordinance to Title II, where all the rest of your committees and commissions' terms and makeup are described. You did a comprehensive update of Title II in the fall. The Residential Design Review Committee is a subset of the Planning Commission. One Planning Commissioner serves as the Chair of the Residential Design Review Committee, and annually, in fact, at the Planning Commission's next meeting on June 6th, when they choose a new Chair and Vice Chair of their commission, they will also appoint one of their membership to serve on the Residential Design Review Committee. I am aware of about the last four years of that, and as a practice, that that person serves for a one-year term. When there's an absence of that Planning Commission member at a Residential Design Review Committee, again, by practice, the staff calls the previous year's Planning Commission appointee to ask for that person to fill in. So we don't have a Vice Chair from the Planning Commission, we don't have an alternative necessarily from the Planning Commission, but you may have an interest in stating that. So tonight, we're asking you to adopt these changes to Title II, which put the term and description of the Residential Design Review Committee in Title II, and to actually mimic exactly what you did in terms of terms in the fall with your other commissions.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Are there any questions? Mr. Royce?
I'm sorry, I have to ask, because I chaired Residential Design for three years. In one section, you talked about appointing a Chair and a Vice Chair, but then, but in the other section here, you talked about that the Planning Commission appointee is the Chair?
Is the Chair, we don't have a Vice Chair of the Residential Design Review Committee.
So that person basically takes that job for a year and then they?
Yeah, the two citizen volunteers, if they're the only two that can make it, we ask the previous year's Planning Commissioner to come to serve as the Chair.
I'm comfortable with that, thank you.
That's our practice.
Okay, Mr. Grocott, did you have a question?
Yeah, I need a reminder here, because didn't we discuss at one time even eliminating this and its impact on our budget and so forth?
Yes, we did a couple years ago. We also brought it to you in the fall with the zoning ordinance update, issues and options, and asked the question about design review and whether you wanted to keep Residential Design Review and actually establish a new Design Review Committee. You indicated no on the new one, and that yes, you would like to keep Residential Design Review in place.
I guess any other questions on that would be a discussion for another time.
Okay, Mr. Grisilli, do you have any questions?
Yep.
Okay.
You served one year, that's all you served, is one year? We, we, I was on, I was on like five years, I was the Chair person of that.
Yeah, well, it's a hot potato.
Thank God it's changed to one year. People have a chance to breathe.
They like to give everyone an opportunity.
Well, they should, they should.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. We're going to open this up to public comment. Any public comments on item 10A? Seeing none, we have some discussion, Mr. Grocott, did you have any discussion, or is that for a later time?
I think I would like to revisit that question again, maybe we do it at the budget, so.
Okay, well, staff will take note of that, and we'll bring that up during the budget. Any other discussion, or can we have a motion?
Mr. Klein, I'd like to introduce ordinance number?
1431.
1431, ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending Section 2.24.140 and adding Section 2.24.155 of the San Carlos Municipal Code Regarding the Residential Design Review Committee.
Seconded by Mr. Royce.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes, sorry.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be moving on, we'll be skipping item 10B, and that will come back at a later date. Mr. Mulpe, do we have a date for that?
June 13th.
June 13th, at the next city council meeting, we will be doing that. So moving on to item 10C, consideration of adopting classification specification for an emergency preparedness coordinator and adoption of resolution amending the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees Clerical and Technical Salary Schedule. Ms. Maddenhall?
Good evening, Rebecca Maddenhall, Inter Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight, for your consideration is the adoption of a class specification for an emergency preparedness coordinator. On April 25th, council directed staff to begin negotiations with Redwood City to develop the hybrid fire department. As part of the hybrid fire department, Redwood City will supply the management and oversight, including the positions of Fire Chief, Deputy Fire Chief, and Battalion Chiefs. On May 9th, council approved the class specs and the authorization to begin recruiting for Fire Captains, Firefighter, Firefighter Paramedics, and a Fire Inspector. As part of the ongoing negotiations with Redwood City, the city is now requesting approval for an additional class spec for an emergency preparedness coordinator. This position will be shared with Redwood City, and the cost for this position has already been included in the proposed budget for the department. The primary functions of this position will be to plan, develop, implement, and monitor the emergency preparedness and disaster response program for the city. This position is similar to the class spec of Police Services Technician 2, and will be part of the AFME clerical and technical unit. The position will be subject to the terms of existing MOU in place with AFME that's effective through October 2012. This class spec was compiled based on input provided by the Redwood City Fire Chief and has also been reviewed and approved by the union representative. In determining the salary range for this position, staff compared the class spec to that of the PST2 position. PST2 position was used as a benchmark, since some of the responsibilities were very similar to those of this new position. We also surveyed other agencies for comparable positions. Very few agencies have this position, so salary data was very limited. The closest positions we could find were those of the San Mateo County District Coordinator at the Office of Emergency Services, and the current Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department Disaster Preparedness Officer. On May 9th, when you approved the setting salaries for the hybrid department positions for the Firefighter, Firefighter Paramedic, Inspector, and Captain, you set the rate at 5% below the current rate of pay at the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. However, for the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, the comparable position at the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department has a salary equivalent to that of a Fire Captain, which is outside the range of the positions we surveyed. I've noted those up on the chart there. Since this position will be a shared position with Redwood City, staff is recommending that the salary be set at 10% higher than the top step of a PST2 position, or in line with a similar position at the County Office of Emergency Services. However, council may elect to adjust the recommended salary, as you did with the other fire positions, to be 5% less than what's currently provided. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we will do questions with Ms. Maddenhall, public comment, and then discussion. Are there any questions for Ms. Maddenhall? Mr. Grisilli?
So I'm a little confused, the individual will be in AFME, no matter what we do, whether we do Alternative 1 or Alternative 2?
It's a non-sworn position.
Okay, but it's, right now, it's, well, what we have now is a sworn position?
No.
So our Preparedness Officer, right now, in the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, isn't a sworn officer?
That's correct, non-sworn.
Non-sworn, okay.
I stand corrected.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Grisilli, is that all your questions?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Royce?
Yeah, just one. So this current position, you know, sits with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, what was the business control or the process in job classification, definition, and pay? You know, here we have someone who has a job description, gets paid $112,000. Was that the Chief, or was that the JPA Board that approved that? Do we know how we got to that job classification and pay?
It would have been conversations with the Chief, a recommendation from the Chief to the JPA Board.
To the Board. So the Board approved this when that person came on four or five years ago?
Right, but the salary was split three ways. That's correct, and I think the difference here is that both, an interesting phenomena here, both Belmont and San Carlos are proposing this position, and in the case of Belmont, it would be split between Belmont Fire and Belmont Police, and San Carlos, it would be split between the two fire departments. But you're right, in the original format, in the JPA, it was split between the two police departments and the fire department, three ways.
Three ways.
But I guess by question, I don't care how many ways you split it, someone's still approving this job for $112,000 three, four years ago. approving this job for $112,000 three, four years ago.
Yes.
Okay. That sounds to be one of those, we got out of whack someplace. I'm disappointed to see that.
Well, it was a firefighter.
I'm glad to see that.
Mr. Royce, then you can address the Chair. Okay, Mr. Grisilli.
I just want to make sure we get, even though it wasn't sworn, the individual was a firefighter, as I understood it.
No.
Christine's not a firefighter?
No, she was a PST.
She was a PST.
Okay.
Well, maybe we did get some.
Okay, are there any other questions for Ms. Mendenhall? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Mendenhall. We will invite the public to comment on item 10C. Seeing no public comment, I think we're going to have some discussion. Who would like to start?
I'd just, to comment on Mr. Royce's question, my understanding, if I remember correctly, it was somewhat of a migration from within the city. We had a person that did some of those duties, and then it was, I believe it was as part of the, with the police department, when they were making budget adjustments, they were the one that suggested we share it with the Fire Department. And that's how it came to be, that it was paid for by three. So I imagine, I don't remember exactly, but I imagine that position and the pay and all that, I don't think it started at 112, but originally, it came to the Fire Board and the City Councils for approval. Give you some history on it.
Thank you, Mr. Grokot. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for item 10C, for the resolution.
Motion Resolution Number 2011.
36.
Resolution, the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopt classification specification and salary schedule for an emergency preparedness coordinator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Grisilli. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Grokot?
Councilmember Grisilli. Councilmember Grokot.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 11A, consideration of reviewing and approving concept for branding, marketing, implementation for the redevelopment agencies, who will be acting as directors.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Agency Chair, Council and Agency Board Members. Mark Suwaki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. Since 2008, the Economic Development Advisory Commission, Economic Development Partnership and staff have been advancing a branding awareness and marketing initiative. The primary goals are to increase the sales of San Carlos businesses, attract a greater share of customers from San Carlos and neighboring communities, attract more business-to-business sales within San Carlos and the region, retain existing businesses that we value, attract complementary businesses, and develop a cohesive, consistent branding message, materials and implementation strategy that is compelling to both consumers and businesses. In 2009, we engaged North Star Destination Strategies to conduct research on perceptions of San Carlos from over 1,200 stakeholders, residents, consumers, and businesses, both within and outside our borders. North Star used this research to develop a brand platform centered on how San Carlos presents a balance of a close-knit hometown atmosphere with an environment for achievement, both personally and professionally. This identity came up again and again in the research, both from residents and the business leaders who have chosen to locate their businesses here. The other message that rang loud and clear was to keep the tagline "City of Good Living", although there were a variety of views of what that meant. The research also showed a majority of outsiders thought the tagline belonged to another peninsula city. Perhaps the biggest takeaway from the research is that San Carlos is not very well-known beyond our borders, and there's a great opportunity to shape our distinct brand and to build awareness for the great things we offer. In February, the city engaged the local design firm Look Agency to help us with implementing a branding and marketing campaign. Their first task was to provide more brand image options beyond those that came out of the North Star process. Look initially presented six options to the Economic Development Partnership, which narrowed the selection and made a recommendation to the EDAC. EDAC reviewed and unanimously affirmed the selection of one of those options. We have asked the Principals of Look, Mary Schweethelm and Betsy Todd, to present all of these options to you now for consideration and approval. I'm available after their presentation for questions, and there are also three members of EDAC here that could speak to their recommendation as well. So I would like to open it to Mary and Betsy.
Thank you, Mr. Suwaki. I know the two of you have spoken to us before, but if you could reintroduce yourselves so we get the names straight.
And Betsy Todd?
Hi, I'm Mary Schweethelm.
Right.
Don't open those. This is a surprise. We'd like to take you through it.
Hey, Mary, I'm going to open. You're not going to, we go back many years, Mary.
I know. First of all, thanks for having us. We're very happy to be here, Vice Mayor and Council Members. We've worked, we've enjoyed this work. Obviously, our heart is definitely in it. We're not only business owners, but we're residents of 25 or 30 years here and raised kids here, so we're really, really excited to be a part of the process of branding San Carlos. So I'm going to take the first part, and then Betsy's going to show you the creative. We're going to back up a little bit and just talk a little bit about Branding 101. I know most of you are clearly aware of branding and some of the branding principles, but just so as a reminder, and to give you a little bit of background into the power of a good brand, and how, I was right-clicking. Is that not right? I'm right-clicking. So this is called Look Branding 101, just to give you a little background. So what is a brand? That's the question that we're kind of posing to you. A brand is a nucleus of all communication and marketing internally and externally. So this is just a visual representation of what a brand is. It's at the center, it's at the very core of all communications, in this case, all city communications, both internally and externally. A brand is a promise that you make and keep to the community. A brand is the big idea. A brand is the expectations that reside in each person's mind about the city. A brand is not what you say you are, but what they say you are. Now, what is a logo? A logo is a cornerstone of the brand. It's the visual articulation of the brand, the identity that will outwardly communicate the spirit of the City of San Carlos. So that was sort of what we're about tonight. We're going to present the first phase of the branding, which is the mark itself, the logo. So, you know, the question is, why invest in a brand? First of all, it organizes the ecosystem within and within the community, within the city government itself. It generates increased awareness and loyalty across all audiences, residents, visitors, businesses, developers, et cetera. It ensures consistency in communication and messaging directed at target segments. You start to build brand equity when your brand is consistent. You can't build brand equity without a consistent brand. It creates a strong internal expectations, energizes city staff and residents, and it reinforces city pride. It extends a positive community perception while highlighting the city value proposition. And very importantly here, it extends a community with clarity beyond the borders of San Carlos. The key to a successful branding is to first understand who you are as a city, and to use that truth as a foundation to build all brand elements. We have to project the truth. We have to figure out who we are, what we are, and be truthful about expressing that. This is how you look now. So you can see there's a lot of inconsistencies, a lot of lost opportunities. If you can imagine that all these pieces had a familiar feeling or consistent look and feel, how we might start to build on our brand. They look like they're from many, many different cities, many, many different communities. So the goal is to create a unique and compelling identity for the City of San Carlos that will serve as the cornerstone of the brand and promote the instant public recognition while supporting a strategic brand platform and reflecting the current and desired community perception. This came from the North Star branding platform. It was the, basically, what we'd call a value proposition in the corporate world, the target audience. For those seeking the charm of a close-knit community complemented by commercial and economic vitality, San Carlos, at the peninsula's midpoint amidst the Bay Area and Silicon Valley, strikes the ideal balance between world-class access and hometown atmosphere. So you have the environment for achievement and the comfort of belonging. Along with that value proposition, we figured in the community perception, and we got that perception basically from the document itself, which went out in the survey, and we read and pored over all that. Then we also met with several, EDAC and the EDAC partnership, and wanted to make sure that we had their input. And these were the key, you know, kind of spirit of the brand, things that were important to them, that was very consistent with the report, you know, to be innovative, to reflect, the brand should reflect the concept of being innovative, connected, balanced, access, young, social. Landmarks were important to just about everybody, train station, Drake Building, et cetera, aviation, train, being green, recreation, shopping, dining, high-tech, and biotech. So I'm going to let Betsy take over from here.
Yep. So we're going to walk through, the first is the preferred option. This went through several meetings. I think what's important here is, again, if you talk about the truth, and again, based on the reports that were put in for North Star, and the community loud and clear said, we're the City of Good Living. I think the question is, you know, does San Carlos own it? San Carlos does own it, and it's a really great opportunity to actually grab it and start branding it. So I think what the preferred option does is it really takes that and puts it at the forefront, and actually puts a stake in the ground that that's the lead messaging here. So this proposed logo is the City of Good Living, San Carlos. And what we've done here tonight is shown you potentially how the brand could play out a little bit. So I think in the past, when you were presented the identity options, you were presented just the logo without really seeing holistically how it could help with economic development, with marketing to residents, to getting more people downtown, more businesses in. So we're going to show you how that could play out. So for example, there could be, you know, a downtown hotspot tip sheet that could actually market, you know, all of the retail and other places downtown with the City of Good Living mark. We could actually brand certain districts in San Carlos and/or just have it be a campaign. So for example, if you were driving down Industrial right now, you could see the City of Good Living. Here, you've got like the construction worker with the Industrial Arts District, should it be named. You can see even down by the parks, there could be park branding. So you start to see how this identity, it's not just, the identity is the cornerstone, but it's the full brand that would take place. There could potentially be advertising to attract people from outside in, again, over 30 Ways to Dine Good, using the word "good" to go with the brand. So this is the preferred option, along with apparel. So one of the things, you know, we mentioned with city pride, I think people are dying to have some apparel with the City of Good Living on it. So in addition to this option, there were other options that we presented, so I'm just going to walk you through those. This was another option. This concept really was about access. So, you know, it has a City of Good Living in it, but it's subordinate. So it was really about the idea that, you know, we're a place where you can, you know, shop, dine, live, do good business. We showed it here on a bus stop, at the airport, so potentially rotating, shop here, dine here, get here. I think in both meetings, what we heard is, they really also liked the copy and the spirit of this one, which we could also integrate into the preferred option. We showed it here on a park bench, shop here, dine here, get here, and how it could play out on the web. So keep in mind, you know, each option could be on any marketing campaign we choose later on. This was another option. It was really kind of, what is San Carlos? So San Carlos, this is what it is. It's all these things. So therefore, it's this bubble. It's the San Carlos, the City of Good Living, made up of all these things. So retail, business, shopping, dining. This potentially was the cover of the Parks and Rec Guide, so you would actually use an icon system to organize certain marketing components. More apparel on the side of a bus. Potentially co-brand advertising. So again, the selected identity would be great to actually get with the businesses, to get some economic development started, get some co-branding amongst the community. So another option, we took actually the train station icon, and actually, one of the unique things about it is that we've got palm trees, and we've got this great old kind of icon. So this is the integration of that idea, showing it kind of as a destination. So we applied that to, you know, farmer's market bag, an app. Any of these could go onto an app, which would be very cool. This one doesn't show very well. It's actually the cover of Business and Economic Development Manual. It had all these factoids. I think you can see it better here. This one, we potentially pitched the idea that you could do kind of a numbers campaign, things that are unique to San Carlos. So, you know, 175 companies, 28,000 residents, you know, seven schools, one airport. So again, the identity is a cornerstone, but the brand is all the other components around it. So there were lots of things within the extra options that I think both meetings liked that we could potentially integrate back into the preferred option. So in summary, again, these were the four that they narrowed it down to, with the preferred one being number one, really putting the stake in the ground and going with the City of Good Living.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you to Look Design and our EDAC Commissioners who are here and those who aren't. You guys have done fantastic work. So we're going to open this up for questions from the Council, and, well, actually, let's just do public comment now. If any of the EDAC Commissioners want to throw in their two cents, or if they're happy with the presentation, that's fine, but is there any public comment?
Okay, Mr. Randall, we recognize what you mean. Mr. Mayor, City Councilman Brian Randall. I live in the San Carlos, the City of Good Living. I like it. I like this, Mr. Suwaki, gentlemen. The fact that you've kept to San Carlos, the City of Good Living, an excellent name, excellent place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to questions from the City Council. Mr. Grisilli?
I don't have any questions. We're, I guess, receiving this, providing feedback and direction to staff if we have any changes or comments, or... I read that, you know, EDAC vetted this and spent a great deal of time on it, and again, as Mr. Klein said, thank them for their hard work and heavy lifting. I like the City of Good Living.
I would hope so.
I like number one.
Any other questions, or we can get into discussion now if we'd like. Mr. Grokot, do you have anything you'd like to discuss?
Just comments.
Okay.
Do you want those now?
Yeah, let's take it off.
I guess, you know, if I were to rank these, I really, maybe it's the architecture background I have, but I really like number four, and the fact that it pulls in something that is an icon for the city that exists, and people do treasure our train station. I think something similar could be done with probably the Drake Building or whatever, but I think that's more recognizable to folks, and it is part of our getting here. I like the whole program you developed with that one about, what was that?
Highway.
Yeah, and the little phrase about, that you had it, that you showed it at the airport, shop here, dine here, get here. I thought that was really nice. The only one that really gets X-ed out for me is number three, because somehow, it's just the way the mind works, I suppose, but I look at that and I see a cigarette. I see smoke coming out of a cigarette, and I don't like it.
Is your middle name Rorschach?
Sure. You go to the dice, though, because we're recorded.
We need to record this.
So one thing you point out, which is important, is, so in the City of Good Living brand, there was the Drake Building. So the idea behind using local landmarks potentially will be in combination with number one, should we go that route? Just so you're clear on that. So the idea of using things like the Drake or the train station could potentially play out into the brand, so...
Okay. And then my last comment on it is, I do find it interesting, I'm not sure with number one, about switching, you know, we're known as, most people say San Carlos, the City of Good Living, people who know that phrase. So to switch it around, I'm not sure if that breathes new life into it, or what, but I'm kind of betwixt and between on that City of Good Living, San Carlos, you know, it turns it around, so...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grocott. Mr. Royce.
Probably wondering what I'm thinking. I'm thinking some really good things here. It's hard to comment. I think I need to kind of enjoy all these flavors. It's nice to have so much. Love the creativity of the city of good living with the, of the, was that number one? The first one, the train station's wonderful. I'd like to take some time and again, savor all this. But this is an incredible presentation of your creativity. It's, there's some really nice stuff here. And thanking the economic development group for working with you guys. There's so much here, and I love it. Love it a lot.
Is that Mr. Royce? Okay. Love fest for Mr. Royce. My only comments are just the general comments I got while watching everyone. I really like number one. I like how you put it. It actually looked good on a T-shirt. It was a T-shirt I would wear. The guy actually kind of looked like me, too, so I saw how it would look on my body.
We did that on purpose.
Okay.
The old people.
Number two, for some reason, it reminded me of Stanford because of the tower and the palm trees, and maybe I'm just there too much, that's why it jumped out on me. Three, I was just at the dentist office, so it reminded me of the Highlights magazine, where you circle what's missing, so. But I like all these. I really liked number four, but not for marketing. I liked it for a new city seal. Our city seal is every city seal on the peninsula. We have a tree everywhere, and number four just screamed to me, is that, that should be San Carlos's city seal. We should have the depot. And, you know, we still have some trees, but it shows that, you know, it really speaks to what the community has a core, and I absolutely loved it. Of course, in a more rounded fashion, so it fits on a pin, but I thought it was great for a city seal. I was really blown away by all the work done, all the work done by EDAC and by Look Design. You know, all of these, we could go with, I'm not a branding guy, so of course, I'm going to lean to the experts and the people that actually did the hard work, but I think number one is fantastic. I really think it kind of, and Mr. Grocott's right, it's weird to say it that way, but I think it's just going to take us a little time to get used to it, and it probably sounds a little better. So you're not going to get much feedback from me, but it's just a fantastic job, and I'm excited to see some of this stuff get really put into action. So I don't know what the staff needs from us at this point. Is that enough? You got Mr. Grocott's couple comments, mine, and a lot of praise.
Well, I think we're looking for...
We have to approve the concept?
Certainly, I think we have consensus direction, but I think we're looking for some specific direction on the approved alternative. I would like the council to perhaps maybe come back around and discuss a little bit of the notion of using number four as a possible city seal on things like, I mean, if you could imagine, because I know that you discussed that a little bit with the, some of the earlier versions that really didn't get a lot of traction with the council. But it's really, in my opinion, I really like number one for the, for the marketing campaign, as EDAC and others have said in the council now. But looking at those, I really only see one possible choice if you wanted to replace the city seal. Imagine it on the side of a city car, you know, or a letterhead, if you'd be interested in updating it with a modern version. Many of the cities in the peninsula have a very traditional-looking city seal, as we do. You're obviously familiar with our city seal. Others have a very different-looking design, if you can imagine sort of what Redwood Cities looks like, very different. Foster Cities, I think, also very different. You don't have to make that decision tonight if you don't want to, but just to get a little feedback.
Mr. Grisilli. I would ask, Mary, I mean, it's all well and good that we want to do it, and I think it'd be really nice on a little thing, but are we supposed to sort of pick one? Isn't that going to be a conflict if you throw it on the letterhead? I mean, I'm not trying to criticize Mr. Malpe, but he said, you know, possibly put it on the letterhead, isn't it, aren't we batting ourselves?
Well, you know, normally, like if you think of Palo Alto or Foster City, they have a seal.
Yes.
And the seal is used for official...
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure...
And then they have a logo.
Okay.
So, I mean, this would be a bit different solution, and you, we would be looking at this more as a branding campaign, more as like a marketing campaign that would have a certain beginning and a certain end. Maybe it's a three- or four-year campaign, and you have this now new seal that takes on the more of the, of the city brand.
I just don't want to give you conflicting...
Yeah, it's outside our scope. I mean, we would have to redo a city seal.
I understand, but I don't want to conflict one and four, I don't want to have them... I thought we were trying to, everything was supposed to be the same, I thought.
It is.
Okay.
To jump in on what Mr. Grisilli was saying, what I had said and proposed is, number one would be our marketing thing, and if you guys could do, we got a side job where you just recreate the seal for official documents. It's not marketing, it's just...
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't batting up against, we weren't telling you to now...
No, I mean, it's a good question, because you're bringing something up that we actually have talked about, because every time we get into a meeting, there seems to be this need to revisit the seal.
Okay.
Because it's outdated. But I think you are bringing up a point where if you launch these things both together, there's going to be some confusion.
That's what I don't want to spend all this, you know, we want to have a singular...
And, I mean, rules for usage. Where do you use the seal versus where do you use the...
You know how to do this. I just want to make sure we weren't going to give you conflicting direction.
Yeah, right now, we'd just be happy with one.
Okay, Mr. Grocott.
I guess I'm a little confused now. I, again, I, my eye, when I look at this, I just keep coming back to number four in terms of its look. And I was sitting here thinking, as I was listening to Mr. Grisilli, to maybe somehow pull those two together. For instance, this one says San Carlos, the city of good living. And what if you use that? What I like about that particular one, and again, is the architecture, it's recognizable to me that really says, you know, San Carlos in an iconic fashion. But perhaps using that top part of it and blending it with this idea of city of good living, San Carlos, and I don't know if there's a way to pull that off or not. Are you going to cut and paste right now?
No, I was going to go back, sorry.
Yeah, this is...
Go back to this one, just as a sample. Oops. That one? So the color's a little off here, but just as a reminder, the two could somewhat live together. You're right, it's not the actual mark.
Mm-hmm.
But it could be integrated with this.
Okay, so I think I heard some sort of consensus on number one. If we can get a motion for the Look Design to go with number one, and maybe we can revisit the seal at a later time. But to give them one preference from the council so they can start moving forward. Do we have a motion for that?
Yeah, I'd make a motion. Again, nothing, Mr. Grocott, you know, your background and you're a designer, and I'm not a designer, so I mean...
Sometimes that's better, though, because you get...
I don't know if it's better, not that I... I think sometimes simpler is better, Kiss, the Kiss method, and it is modern, and I think that's what we need in the 21st century, is a, something that picks, you know, it's just, because quite honestly, we all know that that's the train station, because we live here. But I guarantee you that, I can bring 100 people in here that don't live here, and they don't know, what's that? Is that a building you have? I mean, you know, at least this one is just whatever, but I will make a motion that, as Mr. Klein said, to approve the choice that EDAC approved for number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Royce. Can we get a vote unless there's any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Director Grisilli?
Yes.
Director Grocott?
Yes.
Director Royce?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Klein.
Yes. And with that, once again, thank you to city staff, Look Design and our Economic Development Advisory Commission, great job. And we will be adjourned this meeting in the memory of Mayor Omar Ahmad.